I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Janik?
Here.
Mr. Dembinsky?
Here.
Mr. Wienerski? Mr. Neymar?
Present.
Mr. Dembinsky?
We would to excuse Mr. Wienerski, he has a lot of time.
Would you like to add Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Patak to that motion?
Yeah, add Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Patak. Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Neymar?
Second, please.
There's a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Wienerski, Mr. Jeffries, and Mr. Patak from tonight's meeting. I'll have letters on file. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. It will be excused six to zero. We have one item on the agenda, A-1855, and that's to refinance various bonds. It's going to need to be broken up into four different sections because there's going to be four different ordinances, so I'm going to start out by reading, like, the first ordinance that we need to go through. We can discuss that, get a motion, and go on to the next to break it up into the four if that's agreeable to everyone. All right. The first ordinance that this will spawn would be an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $2,560,000 for the purpose of paying cost of improving city streets by reconstructing, resurfacing, grading, draining, curving, paving, constructing storm sewers and related drainage facilities, and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor?
I would like to just speak broadly, just for a brief moment, about these four items. These four items are all related, as it will be one purchase to say on the bond market. Katie Kleinfeldr of RBC Capital Markets has worked with the city for a long time. She's been our bonding agent. And Michael Sharb, who has written these ordinance, Squire Patton Boggs, he's -- these are the people we've worked with when we did those bond anticipation notes. So they're -- he -- this company is our legal counsel. So, four parts, but it'll be one action on the bond market, and it'll -- they'll kind of handle it together. But to look at these things separately, this first one is the $2.5 million, the bond anticipation note that we borrowed about a year ago. This comes due in April, I believe, and this will refinance that into a 20-year bond. We borrowed the money for one year, and we do need the entire amount. So if you have any other questions. And Audit Patak did, you know, ask me to speak on his part here, and if there are any other questions, he said he would be glad to answer any of them during the week if they'd get him to them, or he would be prepared to answer anything next Monday. But I'll do my best to answer for him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 2006 Roden Bridge, is that the Jackson -- what is that?
That is, but that's one of the other items. This one, the first one, I think, that he's called for is...
Fifty-five?
They're all -- this is all one agenda item, but there's five, four different ordinances that were written. This, this first one that the chairman has called for is for the $2.5 million Lincoln simple project. But to speak on, to answer your question, yes, that was Link -- that was the Jackson Street Bridge and a water improvement for the water tower that we're refinancing.
So A-1855 would be broken into A, B, C, and D, or A-1850?
That's how I've got it written out in the notes here.
They might get new numbers, maybe, before.
Okay.
We'll let the lot of partners...
I'm sorry, what's in my possession, and I want to make sure that I had that. Right, thank you. So that, I just wanted to make sure that, two things. One, I understood how you're going to take A-1855 and break it into the four, and the second piece was the existing 2006 Roden Bridge improvement bonds. How much do we have left on that?
About a million and one, I believe.
One point one. Thank you. No further questions?
I can probably find that number more by the top of my head. That's, I think, what it is.
Anyone else? Mr. Dembinsky?
Uh, thank you. To actually, to answer Mr. Miller's question, the Roden Bridge, at the end of this month, will have $655,000 left in principal, and then the Water Works will have $355,000.
So that's close.
Yeah. Yeah, when you combine, it's, it's right about 1.1. Yeah, it was right in there. I did notice, and this is something I'll, because I might reach out to the auditor on, the contract that was provided made a call, a call-out that we're using three million of this for them to re, basically reissue the Lincoln simple and sidewalk thing. It didn't mention that we were also going to be using it to refinance the road bridge and Water Works one. I didn't know if that mattered, that one was called out and one was not, but I can just ask him later on during the week. Actually, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I think it does. I think it's on four different ordinances.
So there was the ordinances that were sent out. There was an official, official statement, City of Amherst 2019, from the company, RBC, and in there, under the purpose, it lists that we're using this to refund the $3 million from the various bonds that we issued this year. It just didn't mention that we were using it to refinance the other ones. I just didn't know if that mattered or not. That was all. I'll, I'll reach out.
Yeah, I, I don't see it though. I, I see four different items, and I, what I saw had described all four. So I, we'll check into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe just one more comment. And the way Michael Sharb has explained this, we've got plenty of time with, for three readings on this. I mean, we are taking into account that this won't be passed until into January, so I, I believe that we were asking for the emergency, but it can go three readings.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
So we have a guarantee on the locked-in rate?
No guarantee yet. I mean, the bond market's changed, but I'm guessing if we move pretty quickly, it should be at that rate that they state.
Thank you.
Mr. Dembinsky?
Move to take A-1855A to the floor of council with emergency.
Mr. Miller? Second, please. Any other comments or questions on the first part of A-1855, taking the $2,560,000 to the floor of council with emergency for the bond issuance? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second to take this item to the floor with emergency. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries six to zero. The second part of the pack, which I have listed B in the minutes, the ordinance would read, "An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $515,000 for the purpose of paying cost of installing and improving sidewalks and declaring an emergency." And everyone should have a copy of all four of the ordinances attached to their agenda request. Mr. Mayor?
Just real quick, this is just to refinance that one-year bond anticipation note. We spent about three-quarters of that money on this year's program, and we'll spend the rest on next year's sidewalk program.
Thank you. Mr. Dembinsky?
Move to take A-1855B to the floor of council with emergency.
Mr. Miller?
Second, and a second. Quick question here with this improving sidewalks and the bonds that we're going to pull for that. You did a real nice job of connecting St. Joe's Drive there, Father Martello Drive, I believe, with Tarrant, and I appreciate that. I think that was a good solution for the piece of land that we, that we, you, and the rest of us have decided to vacate. Is there any other locations where we can, within this, this bond, make some connections?
You know, I didn't use bond money for that connection. That was out of the general fund, this other sidewalk program. So I actually didn't use this borrowed money to make that connection. I, I used general fund money, so I didn't find it proper. We kind of borrowed that money with the purpose of repairing and replacing, you know, residential owned, so we kept that out of that program. We, we could look, and I think the Safe Out to School thing is going to be looking at that.
Do you, so none of the current...
Have been responsible for, but the city, you know, we took our share of that.
Okay. Just like the St. Joe's could have been responsible for that sidewalk, would you just change...
But that was kind of, that was kind of a different situation, a different enough, I thought, to keep separate.
Okay. No, that's fair. Fair enough. I just wanted to try to get in my mind, are we going to attempt to take a look at some of those areas that need obstacles to...
I don't think so. I think we're going to wait and see how this Safe Out to School program plays out and see what we end up with.
Seeing none, there's a motion to take A-1855B to the floor of council with emergency. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries six to zero. The next ordinance in this pack would be an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1,015,000 for the purpose of repaying cost of improving Cooper Foster Park Road from State Route 58 to Overland Avenue by widening, reconstruction, reconstructing, resurfacing, grading, draining, curving, paving, constructing storm sewers and related drainage facilities, and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor?
This would be the only one of the three that wouldn't, that I wouldn't consider a refinance. You know, the first two were the, the bond anticipation notes we're refinancing. The last one is some other bonds that we have, we're going to refinance. This is new money the city's asking for, Lorraine. That's about a $5 million total project, and we're splitting that cost in half with Lorraine. So our share, in real round numbers here, is $2.5 million. We've come real close to about a million and a half dollars' worth of funding, you know, with Nowaka and some other funding sources that we've really gone out and got created for. So our city's, and that's the only thing we have done. The city thinks it's better to spread this out over 20 years and get this prop, you know, this long-awaited project finished next year.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for working on this. This has been a long time coming. I appreciate your work doing Nowaka. It's an organization that a lot of times we don't get a dedicated road that goes right into the, basically Giant Eagle, and it's owned by a private investment. And that road is horrendous, and that should be maintained. And I really would like to see us use this as a motivating factor as to why that road should be brought up to code. There's puddles, there's cracks, it's a disaster. It goes between Cooper Foster and Tractor Supply, Giant Eagle. I don't remember the actual name of the private drive. You may...
Liberty, no?
Amchester.
Kreske.
Kreske. No, Kreske's the east west, so is it Liberty or...
Amchester.
Amchester.
Amchester, so we're all, yeah. So I guess we all know which street we're referring to or private drive, but we don't really need to get on that and get on that owner and say, listen, it's time. It's time to take care of that. Please. If you have no more questions?
I've had some preliminary discussions with those developers. There's probably three entities involved, and I think the city should probably partner to some extent with that to bring it up to code and then maybe even dedicate it at some point in time. So that's in my radar. I'm hoping after this project's done that we can work with them and get something completed there, maybe even bring it up to city specs, and then, you know, maybe ask council if they'd like to dedicate it. It's really a much-used public road, but it's just not up to city specs at this point. So it's, it's something on my radar. I want to think about it. I don't know exactly what we want to do, but the conversations...
And, and I realize that we're on another, but I do, I haven't, I don't mind partnering with businesses. I think that's good. But we're not partnering with residents to help bring sidewalks up and putting sidewalks in where they're not, or helping them besides giving them a loan that we're going to charge them interest for because we get the interest on it as well. I, I just think that that sends a bad message. That sends a message that we won't help the residents when it comes to a mandated sidewalk upgrade, but here we're going to possibly work with upgrade and then dedicate.
But, but I think you're wrong with, we didn't partner. We did partner. The, the city did all the engineering. The city went out for all the bids. The city did all the handicap ramps. The city's taking on the, the interest costs, the administrative, you know, costs. You know, all the residents are paying for the actual construction of the concrete and the 2% that the county's going to charge. So the city...
So we did, when I sat in your office, we did the discussion about interest and where we're going to go with it. You guys ended up dropping that?
I think, I think our discussions on council floor at the city was going to take responsibility for a lot of those costs.
Well, I was, I was here. I don't know where I just stopped, but I'm not sure.
We're getting, we're getting kind of off the subject of the Cooper Foster and back on sidewalks.
So I'd like you to consider that as well.
...handle and everything. So I did ask the auditor's office for our current debt schedule. If you look, at least at the original amounts that are maturing essentially at the end of this year, we're going to remove $6.4 million in original liability. So adding on 1 million to me is not, it, it more than balances out, so I don't have a concern about adding on just 1 million this year. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I agree with Council Dembinsky's assessment of, with the debt being reduced, going out for new money, and with what's going on in that area, this would be a good time to connect. It really would, to connect that 20%, bring a full connection for safe walking, for anybody that wants to walk to the stores, walk to the restaurants, and get to that area without having to bring a car, and then we already have congestion issues as it is. Anytime they can take a pedestrian friendly route in there, if that's what it is, 20%, I would be in full support of, of seeing that, that investment. I think it's an excellent investment in our city. So please consider that if you would, when you take a look at the engineering list. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I've also got an engineering concern. With the entrance of the, into the Planet Fitness parking lot and the way the red light hangs, I've often seen, they just, they just go under the red light. Is there any way to look at that?
It's already, but even though that's a City of Lorraine concern, we brought that up, and it did get engineered, that, that entrance is probably going to get moved farther east, and that, that intersection's going to get aligned differently at Lorraine's cost. So I really take my hats off to Lorraine to listing some of our concerns and actually did something about it.
Right.
So they incurred some extra costs to make that, from what I understand, a little better.
Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you. Still looking for a motion for item C of this one. Mr. Dembinsky?
Move to take item A-1855C to the floor of council with emergency.
Mr. Neymar?
Second, please.
Further comments or questions on part C of the grouping? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second to take item C of A-1555 to the floor of council with the emergency. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries six to zero. And the last part of the packet would be an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1,025,000 for the purpose of refunding for debt charges savings on Series 2006 dated March 15, 2006 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor?
This was something that Katie from our, the bonding agents had talked about, and over the life of, that is left, I think these mature mid, mid 2025 or somewhere around there. We can save $27,000 over the life of this by, since we're already refinancing and going out to the bond market, if we include these, we can save a little bit of money. So it was suggested that we do this also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dembinsky?
Move to send item A-1855D, I believe...
Yes.
...on to the floor of council with emergency.
Mr. Miller?
Second, please.
Further comments or questions on part D of the agenda? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second to take part D of A-1855 to the floor of council with the emergency. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Dembinsky?
Do your turn.
Mr. Neymar?
Second, please.
All those in favor have adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. You stand adjourned at 7:25.
We'll use the attendance from the Finance Committee earlier. We have one item on the agenda tonight. That's agenda number A-1856, an ordinance approving and accepting dedicated improvements for the preserve at Corey Lakes subdivision three. Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak to this at all?
I would. You guys have accepted these ordinances in the past. This is the final phase of Corey Lakes. It's Phase Three. Developers done really good job. The Utilities Department and the engineer has done a walkthrough. There's a very minor punch list, things like removing the plug from the sewer system so that the sewage can reach out, straightening out a water line, testing the water valves at the street, very, very minor items. So Mr. Campana, Mr. Brady is here to ask that you accept these improvements, and maybe I'll just turn the flow over to one of them if they would have, if you guys have questions for him. But I would suggest going ahead and sending this to the floor of council with the administration's blessing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brady, do you state your name and your, your address, please?
Sean Brady, 129 Bassett Road, West Lake, Ohio. Thank you, Mayor. This is the final phase of 100 lot community of Corey Lakes. This before council is the acceptance of the road, water line, and various utilities. The Corey Lakes has been an outstanding success. Those houses, before we started in Amherst with this community, I think the year before Amherst had pulled 11 building permits for single-family homes, and we've been averaging roughly four a month in Corey Lakes. And if you go in there, you'll see, you know, many families, Christmas lights, you know, it's, it's a lot of good stuff. And when this, when this was before you guys initially, it seems like 20 years ago, but it was probably only three, you know, we had said that we thought that there was going to be a huge development market that these homes were going to build, and it has been just that. And it's truly because of the creative involvement efforts of the administration, Planning Commission, and City Council, Bob and us, to do it, that this has came to fruition. And one of the things that I think that our council would be extremely proud of if they knew it, if they don't know what I'm going to tell them, is that the majority of these homeowners that bought in there, it's first-time homeowners. And that opportunity is really, really difficult for them to have in the marketplace, especially in a great school system like Amherst, in a solid community, and all the wonderful things that it has to offer. So on behalf of those homeowners, Bob and I would like to say thank you. We really appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to develop in our community and do what we feel is a very, very nice, God, community development. We're very proud of it. So thank you for that. So what you're accepting tonight, or recommended to accept, is the final phase of that development. There's 37 lots. We are actually 12 months ahead of schedule. We didn't expect to even be in front of council or Planning Commission for the final phase of this development until sometime in 2020. I'm very thankful that we are here. So we're asking that that development phase gets approved. As a matter of fact, they already have, I just found out today, they already have four families that are ready to move into Phase Three, which they intend to start building on, you know, once council authorizes the plat and accepts the improvements. So that's something that I think we should all be very proud of, and I'm certainly thankful for. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Chairman, one other thing, since they kind of go hand in hand, I'd like to talk a little bit about Beaver Creek and some timelines and stuff after we talk about Corey Lakes, if you'll...
Sure, absolutely. First, let me see if there are any questions from, or comments from the committee. If not, please, oh, Mr. Neymar, go ahead.
Thank you. Just briefly, I know the mayor touched on the punch list. Mr. Brady, was there anything that you wanted to add about the punch list? It's mentioned that they're very minor items.
Extremely minor, and actually, a couple of them, items that the mayor's mentioned are, I think, very...
Thank you. And just briefly, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Department has signed off pretty much.
Utilities Department's real happy to, to recommend this to council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Very pro, happy, and our gratitude for the work you're doing in our city. So thank you for putting together quality construction in the City of Amherst. With that, I'd like to take A-1856 to the floor of council.
Mr. Cowherd?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to take A-1856 to the floor of council. Is there any discussion at all? All right. With that, we'll take a voice call. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is passed instead of the floor of council. Now, Mr. Brady, you said you wanted to do...
And I think this pertains not just specifically to our developments, but to any residential development. I, I know I've talked to council on many occasions about the timeline and how much time it takes to put these in, and you guys get a 30,000-foot view of what's really going on. You know, we show up, we get rezoned, and then we show back up, group of plans, and then we show back up, and then we dedicate the improvements to the city. And there's just so many moving parts to that. And so I just kind of wanted to make you aware of, you know, from this point forward, once council accepts these improvements, the timeline, especially if they don't do it on an emergency, which they haven't done in the past, the timeline of the 30 days, it takes us to go through the county roughly 30 days to get them to accept a plan from City Council's vote. So in the case of Beaver Creek, what we're faced with is because of the fact that council goes on recess, I think we're missing a meeting this month because of the holiday season. We're actually getting pushed into the middle of January if Beaver Creek goes, uh, full three readings. And what that does to us is if we get pushed into the middle of January with council accepting those improvements, then our plat doesn't file until the middle of February, which means we can't start construction until roughly March 1st, which puts us at May 1st to start selling houses, which is actually the best time to start building houses is May 1st. So we missed like a 60-day period just by the very fact that council only has one meeting in the month of December. And so what I would like for council, obviously you're not going to decide on it tonight in committee, but I wanted to bring it up just so you could liberate on it and perhaps talk amongst yourselves. There's really nothing going on at Beaver Creek. It's just sitting there. We're actually trying to plant trees and stuff like that in anticipation of council approving it. We would respectfully ask that perhaps council approves that at the second reading of council next week. It does not have to be on an emergency because once it's approved, which is assigned by the various members of administration, and we can submit to the county, and we can kind of just move along from there and perhaps be ready to start models in the early part of January. Secondly, we have probably 25, we expect to sell probably 25 houses within the first 45 days of that development, you know, because of such pent-up demand. There's probably even more demand for that development than there is for Corey Lakes, seeing how well that's playing. And actually, if, if council would pass Corey Lakes on the first reading, since it's our last phase, that would help them out, too. I'm not going to ask for too much, though. If all, if I can only get one, I would prefer to have Beaver Creek so we can get started on the models. However, I would like to remind council that, you know, the ultimate leverage that the city has, forget about funds, forget about legal contracts, forget about our reputation and everything else, the fact that we have 100 building lots, 108 as of today, sitting on the ground in Amherst, and we need building permits from the mayor and his administration in order to build on those, that's a tremendous amount of leverage. I mean, that's five, over $5 million worth of assets that we have sitting in the city that, you know, if we don't do what we're supposed to do, or if there's something that comes up that we don't respond the way council wants us to respond, there's a tremendous amount of lopsided leverage at the paper of the city. So, you know, again, I just wanted to put it out there. So, and, you know, again, I just wanted to put it out there. I'm happy to answer any questions with that, and I certainly respect whatever direction council decides to take this, but I just wanted to, I think more than anything else, just make you aware of the situation that we're faced with and the timeline of the beginning of that.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mr. Miller, you have a comment?
No, no comments, please.
Mr. Mayor?
I think one of the reasons we're, uh, been so successful building new houses and bringing businesses and, and building things in town is we've been real flexible with the developers. There's really been a few times they've come and asked for a few things, they made some promises, we, we gave in a little bit, but they, they came through with their promises. I, I've had zero trouble with this developer at all, and I would see no, ultimately up to council, I'm not, I'm not asking you to abide by what they want, but I, I don't think there would be any issues if it gets a, a, a family into the City of Amherst sooner, and if they start paying taxes sooner, they start enjoying what we have to offer sooner. I, I don't know how that's a bad thing. I don't know how it fits within the law of emergency and suspending rules. I, I, I would support it if, if there's a, a way of doing it. Uh, the, these guys have been great developers, and, you know, I hope they finish this one on a, you know, a year sooner than the last and, and continue to find something else to do here in town. So anything you can do to help would really be appreciated by the administration.
Mr. Brady?
Yeah, real quick, just to kind of speak to that, my understanding is that if the, if it's not set down on an emergency basis, then it doesn't go into effect right away. So if it's still passed on the first or second reading, anybody that votes in the affirmative can bring it back up during that period of time, and I'm sure the council president will be happy to educate me on that, do a little bit.
President, did you must be...
Yeah, you, you know, to suspend rules, which is what Mr. Brady's asking to do, does not require any health and safety considerations. That's only to put the emergency on, and that emergency, if the emergency is not on that legislation and he's not asking for it, that means that if you do suspend rules, the actual ordinance doesn't take effect for 30 days. But again, uh, it doesn't require any su, health and safety consideration to suspend rules. So I just want to let you know procedurally that's what the situation is.
Mr. Miller?
Um, thank you again, and if there's no further, if we have anything else, I'm going to adjourn.
Um, there's a, well, thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. There's a, uh, motion to adjourn. Mr. Demidinsky?
Second.
Motion, a second on the floor, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.